Previous meeting, the regular meeting Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second?
I'll say in motion.
Thank you.
Pam?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Tyler? Motion carries three oh, number three, plans and payroll. Anyone have any questions?
Motion to approve things and payroll.
Second?
I'll say in motion.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam? Motion carries number four, reports manner, is leaving here. Police chief?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hello, sir.
Hello, chief.
Um, so I put in front of you guys, it's the, it's an, it says the dispatch call log. I'm gonna be giving you guys that monthly, however, I can't stress this enough that there's gonna be open cases in that log, so it needs to stay right here, okay? I'll try to do my best to redact names as we go along, but that's not always gonna be the case, and once it hits the court system, it's public information anyway. But you're probably gonna know just about everybody that's in that log, so. Um, what you're look, what you're looking at is basically time that I'm called out, how long I'm on the call, what the call is about, and that's where I get the numbers that you have here, okay? These are not accurate, I'm not gonna lie to you, I kinda sat down, I'm like, yep, that's about right, just simply because I didn't get it done till probably fifteen minutes ago. Um, but the actual activity log is kinda like checks and balances too. So you can see what officer is doing what. And not that you guys are gonna question that, but you'll just see exactly how busy we are. Um, I was gone August because, oh, I was at the rally, that was a good time, so I'm not sorry for that. Um, but July was very busy, August was just as busy, and September's turning out to be just as busy as August is. And I think once we get the new guy hired, that's gonna hopefully calm down after next April. But, um, if you guys have any questions for me regarding that log, feel free to ask, I don't mind telling you. Um, but if you don't have anything for me, then that's all I got for ya.
Thank you.
Yep.
Economic development, she's on. Oh, okay. City superintendent?
Um, he's not there, some reports I'll get for him has obviously been doing some concrete work, some fixing some curb stops and water mains. Um, we did get the final from league inspectors after we emptied our pool, the, all the seams are shot in it, so they'll have to redo all the seams in there, so we'll probably go out for requests for bids. Um, we did give them a quote, we're looking around forty thousand, we'll make sure we give it up for it, but. Um, our street sweeper that we bought is, we have it finally now, so you'll see that roaming around here. I should come follow the leaves. Um, other than that, we're just, we've got a lot of work at C and D and a lot of, a lot of transportation calls, so.
I'll book the truck. The truck.
Up and going, up and going, good, using it, yep. Nope, not yet, we're looking, so as soon as everything comes in, we'll talk about selling. Um, if you guys so choose, probably the Tahoe, the backhoe, the truck, and the old sweeper. So, we're waiting for their last batch to come in. And they've given me two weeks for the last six months, so it's, whenever it's here, we'll deal with that, so.
Okay, city attorney, Mr. Curris?
I don't have anything that's not otherwise on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Number five, discussion action ordinance number nine eight one, revise and provide rules and regulations regarding nuisances.
And, you know, you, you don't have Luke here, but nine eight one, nine eight two are his recommendations and suggestions for clarifying the nuisance ordinances into a format he would be more comfortable with and think is easier to deal with, and there's probably nothing bad with that. Uh, I guess I think you should cooperate with him if he's gonna take care of that stuff. We looked him over and had a couple comments and suggestions, and he took what was pertinent and put it in there the way we had a little meeting at the city office and sent him a list of requirements or suggestions, and he fixed his issues and a few typos along the way that we got to make fun of. Uh, the, the third one, the repeal of four four oh two, uh, you'll get that far right shortly, and that's the board of health procedure for cleaning up nuisances. And, you know, you don't have to use it, it could be left in there, or you can repeal it, you could do it either way. It was used in the last ten or fifteen years as an alternative to prosecution, but it's never been very popular, and it has so many steps, it's never been very effective. His suggestion is just get rid of it and take the board of health procedure out of there, which I certainly have no problem with. It has caused confusion over the years to have two or three ways to go about this. I think I've probably tried to explain it to four or five different councils, and if you just back off to just the nuisance procedure and do away with the board of health nuisance stuff, it's clean. So I think it's all everyone's consensus that the changes are fine, you should go ahead and pass them, and if you wanna repeal four oh two, have at it.
Sorry, number, uh, number five, ordinance number nine eight one, revise and provide rules and regulations regarding nuisances.
Motion to pass ordinance ninety-one.
Okay, number second?
I'll say in motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, uh, Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries three zero on first reading?
Motion to, uh, wait second, third reading?
Okay, second?
I'll say in motion.
Okay, all in favor, Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Number six, discussion action ordinance number nine eight two, revise and provide rules and regulations regarding nuisances specifically defined.
Motion to pass ordinance ninety-two.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero, first reading?
Motion to suspend second, third reading?
Second?
Second in motion.
Okay, all in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries three zero on second and third reading. Number seven, discussion action ordinance number nine eight three, revise and provide rules and regulations regarding nuisances, repeal code four dash four zero two.
Motion to pass ordinance ninety-three.
Second?
I'll say in motion.
Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero on first reading?
Motion to, uh, suspend second, third reading?
Second?
I'll say in motion.
All in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam? Motion carries three zero on second and third readings. Number eight, discussion action, resolution number six five four, updates to stop yield signs and parking limits.
Now, this has got about fifteen different parts. Here's a draft that does everything that Courtney had on her list. If you need to edit it, we're gonna have to scratch and reprint, but if you do it all the way it was suggested, just take one and hand it on the file, there you go.
I think this probably discussed last meeting quite a bit, or a little bit. You're, you're kind of the spearhead of this, weren't you?
Maybe a little bit.
Yeah?
Can I, can I look at that?
There's an extra copy.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I got a couple. I mean, this, what you've got in front of you just mirrors in a little more formal language for a resolution, what Courtney had her email. I left out the thing that was scratched out on the bottom copy of what I had, the northbound stop sign on front. The map?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the map that Jeremy sent out kinda covers them all. You need to discuss them one at a time, that's policy business.
I just had two questions, I was just clarifying, so on the cemetery road?
Okay.
When you come into town, or like when you're going out of town, we're removing the two?
From south to north, correct? Yes.
When we're coming into town, we're removing the one, would be in front of Haver Camp and Wigger's house?
Where's Haver Camp?
Um, like the road we go to?
The only one that I wanna keep, and I think it might be easier, is you know where Billy Ray Hoseite's house is? Is leave that one.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
And then the other one, when you're coming in from the south?
Okay.
And where Mary's is located?
Yes.
Not former Legion, so I don't remember a time there ever not being a stop sign there.
Okay.
So I'm just saying people was being creatures of habit.
Fair enough, and, and I will tell-
I don't have a problem with that, I would just make it true, yeah.
Sure, sure, no, and, and here's my reasoning behind that. Like, I, I can hear people tell me so-and-so didn't stop, I have so many people not stopping at the stop signs. So I'll go plant myself there and sit there for about an hour, and guess what everybody does?
Stops.
Right, um.
Cause they see that white car with the blue and red lights on it.
Yeah, well, of course, I mean, so.
So I didn't wanna slow down.
And I, I, watching traffic at that intersection is kinda silly anyway. I've seen people just like, oh, do I go, do I wait, especially on Locust when you're going east to west?
Cause there's no-
It's a throughway, I mean, there's no stop. Well, when trucks are coming from, you know, Highway twenty going south, I mean, they're not, they're not going that fast anyway, so I don't know why they need to stop again and then just take off one more time. But if we put a yield sign there, that would require the people going east to west to yield to know that there's some traffic, there's, it's throughway. Um, and the park, and when, when you come out of Mary's parking lot, they're, they're watching for traffic, they come out, and not everybody stops at that stop sign, that's the truth.
Cause you're not stopping to get off.
And then you stop to stop again, so that's one, another reason why I think that that one's kind of silly. Leave the stop sign at Front Street, that silly little angle, yield sign on Locust, east to west, and then get rid of the north and south.
I just wanted it on camera to clarify.
Yep, nope, that's fine.
That's the only two questions I had.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
For only a couple hundred thousand, we could turn it into a roundabout.
Let's do that. Do you know how much fun that would be? Do you know how many people would fly over that thing?
Budget's already done, you're late, sorry.
Um, okay, well, budget's done, thanks, Jeremy, buzzkill.
I mean, I, I kinda remember some of these stop signs being installed in the recent years just because things were being patrolled. Obviously, we're gonna do that.
Absolutely, I mean, it's-
It's like west, Northwest Street, I mean, it's a highway.
Yeah. Um, I will tell you the time, I pulled over, and I don't mind telling you guys this, I pulled over two people on Northwest Street. And he was eighty-two years old, and I was embarrassed both times because I'm like, I cannot believe I'm actually gonna write this ticket. But he just, I mean, he's old, and, and not that that is an excuse, but he's like, oh, I didn't realize how fast I was going, the car was old, I don't even think the speedometer worked. But, um, the stop signs going out of town just make no sense to me. And we'll patrol it, I mean, I have never had anybody speed except for him on that, on that street, honestly. I know the biggest complaints I've had are semis that have not stopped because they're, they're rolling through that stop sign coming north to south, and that's the biggest complaint that I've had. But I can't, you know, I can't do anything if I'm not there and I don't see it, so I think just constant traffic control, that will, you know, that will help that out too, so.
And that stop sign's staying?
That stop sign is staying, if, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we vote on it, I mean, that's one I'd like to keep in place, so.
And then, does anybody have any concerns about, um, the new parking restrictions that were requested?
It was kind of a, a toss-up, like what side do we want them to park on? Um, I, there was an accident there on Elm Street, oh, I think it was second of September, third of September. Um, just the way the cars are parked, the individual couldn't see this vehicle coming south to north because of the way that they are staggered on parking, so we just felt that maybe, or that if you keep it uniform, like by the band shell.
So the band shell, you can't park on the west side, or east side currently. And I know when there's two, when people don't take their cars off the streets for when it snows, we can't get a snowplow through them, it's, it's so tight there, so. And some people just park on the street whether they have driveway or not, they just think that's where it belongs, so.
Right. So do you guys have any-
I was worried about, about, back in, anybody saw him.
I know. That's a good thing. So I don't know if you guys have any other questions about any of the other stop signs?
Well, they can park on your side, it's not yours.
They think that their side is theirs, though.
Yeah, they do.
Really, I mean, I, I don't know that I've ever gotten a call about that, Tyler.
You didn't need a call.
Thank you, you know what, thank you for that, I mean, I appreciate that, you know, that's amazing that you were neighborly, huh?
Very neighborly.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on resolution number six five four that's proposed? Okay, as for a motion?
So I'll make that motion to six five four, to pass resolution six five four?
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor, Brian?
Aye.
Pam? Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Number nine, discussion action approval to open new bank account for N A H T F grant funds.
Um, I asked, well, we've just finished, two weeks ago? We finally signed all the paperwork, so that's actually gonna start now, the fourplex will actually be going now. Um, but I did ask at that meeting if I needed a separate bank account, that was not interest-bearing for the funds, and he told me yes, so I'm just getting ahead of the ball before we start getting grant money in. I just need your permission to open new account, I'll bring a resolution next month with the actual account number on it and authorized signer, so you guys can approve that, but, uh, the D T R one, I kinda got blindsided, like as I was getting money, she's like, oh, by the way, you need a separate account, I'm like, awesome, so I'm just gonna do it now before we get too far ahead, so that's all I need is permission to open a new account. And I'll be at Midwest Bank.
Motion to approval to open new bank account for N A H T F grant funds.
Second in motion.
Second, okay, Pam?
I'm staying.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
You want me to vote yes, just then, get three or two is enough, with one abstention?
Two more times.
Motion carries two zero with one abstention? Number ten, discussion action approval of full-time police officer.
I should've just stayed there.
You should've just stayed.
I know, I didn't end up walking last night, poor town.
I, yeah, I guess I could, right? Okay, so, um, I have made, I selected the officer that I would like to work for Plainview. His name is Andrew Funston, he's here tonight. I could sit up here and talk to you about him all day long, but I don't, who knows him better than him than himself, right? So, um, the reasons I selected him was his background, we're pretty like-minded, he's not from Plainview, so he doesn't really know anybody, and I think that's a plus. It works for me, cause I didn't know anybody here in town either. Um, so with that being said, I'll go ahead and have him come up, and he can talk about himself a little bit, and I don't know, either bore you or excite you, however you wanna look at it, so, Andrew, come on, go ahead and come on up.
Good evening. Good afternoon, everybody. So, thanks, chief, for giving us opportunity. Um, I've had the pleasure of meeting a few of you, so if you do know kinda about who I am. Uh, for those that don't, I give you a brief summary. I give you a brief summary. Um, I've got over fourteen years of law enforcement type of experience. I worked alongside the Federal Protective Service, part of Homeland Security. Um, I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, did two combat tours to Iraq. I've also got a college education with a master's degree in management. Um, to keep it brief. Uh, a big question I get asked by a lot of people is why Plainview? Very honest, you know, uh, question, especially since my wife and I recently moved here with our son from the Seattle area. Well, I can tell you, we wanted to find a place that was more like-minded on how we thought about things in life, how we wanted our lives to be, and she's got family out in North Platte, and so she said, how about we move to Nebraska? I said, great, let's, let's look into it. Um, first job I found was out in Norfolk, she bought a, you know, we bought a house out here in Plainview, they moved out a week prior before I did. And the call I got every night was how amazing everybody is here, how polite, courteous, respectful everybody is, everybody weighs high to everybody, um, they feel really safe here, we don't feel like we have to lock our doors all the time, watch, you know, everything we do, and, uh, that was good to hear. As, as somebody who has, you know, the extensive law enforcement background as I do, that's something I always wanna hear. Uh, the reason why I applied for the position was because of that reason, um, I wanna take my skills and experience and education, help keep this town that way, to help keep it safe and keep the community the way it is from where I see it, from the outside looking in. A very close knit community that looks out for each other, helps take care of each other, and has a lot of the, you know, traditional traditions and values that you guys have all shown us here, so. Um, if anybody wants to ask me any questions, I'm open for any questions.
I'm the agitator of the Legion, I'll be talking to you. I forgot to warn you about-
She's your neighbor to the south, a block on the other side.
So Chauncey's on one side, and I got Seth on the other side.
A block to the south.
A block to the south.
Don't worry, you'll get to know her.
I'm fine, you know.
And after that's my wife receives a half ton of everybody in town. Oh, okay.
And do you have any questions? Tyler?
I don't know.
Brian?
No.
Yes, thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve Andrew as a full-time police officer for the city of Plainview.
Make that motion?
Okay, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Number eleven, discussion action approval of wage.
So I feel with his experience and education, starting him out at eighteen fifty would, not being certified, I think is fair. Um, once he graduates the academy, which won't be until next April, unfortunately, because that's as soon as I could get him into the academy, um, I'd like to see a, a, at least a dollar raise at that point, nineteen fifty. So I'd like to start him out at eighteen fifty. Um, I will tell you that I've got a contract that he will sign, and we'll, we can just do that afterwards, Brian, if you're okay with that, but I would like to at least start him out at eighteen fifty.
Any discussion?
Um, what, what kinda hours is, would a guy start off working, like, uh, eight to five, or just kinda when you have?
The way that it's gonna have to work, Tyler, based on the new L B fifty-one that came out for law enforcement, he can't work the street, he can't have any interaction with public until he's certified, even with me. Like, if I take him out with me on the hours that I work, he's just gonna have to shadow, I mean, there can't be any discussion whatsoever. Um, so what I have incorporated, and I hope you guys will be okay with this, I've talked with county, um, while he's, you know, from here to, from today until, or the third, um, until he goes to the academy January one, he's gonna do quite a bit of ride-alongs with county to kinda see how the county operates. Um, I, I'm gonna have him read policies that we have, um, ordinances. He's gonna work a couple times in dispatch so that he can understand exactly what dispatch is like when we're, when they're busy and we're out on the street. Um, I might even have him ride along with Pierce Police Department a couple times so that they can under, he can understand what, how they do things. Um, but to be honest with you, for that first three months, it's just gonna be kinda training, that's all, that's all it can be, so.
That doesn't hurt.
And I'll work the schedule with the county guy, so he'll give us the forty, I mean, he's gonna get the forty hours a week. Um, I may take him out on a, on a Saturday or Sunday, just so he can see what a Saturday night is like, but to be honest with you, sometimes the daytime is a lot busier than the nighttime, I'm just gonna throw that out there. So that's what my plan is until he goes to the academy. And then when he's in the academy, he can't, I'm, he's not gonna, and I don't mean to say he, like you're not here, but, um, the weekends is gonna be time with the family and studying, cause there's a lot of studying involved, and obviously, we know that with what happened with Jordan, he filled out, visited a lot of time and just studying. So that's what the weekends are gonna be, so his work week is gonna be at the academy Monday through Friday, and then when he comes home, um, from the academy, the weekend is gonna be his, do what he needs to do, so.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yep, you're welcome.
Make a motion to approve his wage at eighteen fifty an hour.
Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Number twelve, discussion action approval of employee wages fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
These are just the same as we seen, we just gotta prove. Yeah, so it's just the same we've talked about, uh, there's no changes from last time, so we start over first our fiscal years.
I'll make that motion to approve the employees' wages for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, okay?
The budget?
The budget ranges, yes.
But, yes, the budget.
Second?
I'll say in motion.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion carries two to one. Number thirteen, discussion action change date of constant meeting due to general election November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. So be similar to the primary, it may, where we had it on the Thursday, two days later, if that works for everyone?
I will not be able to be here on the tenth, I have another meeting that night that I cannot miss, so if you can find someone to take my spot, that's fine, but.
What other dates would work? Actually, no, and I don't want to be here on the tenth either.
I'd say we're gonna be in Jersey in the heart of this, I thought. Well, hmm.
Like that.
I wouldn't have a problem with the seventh.
That would be school board, though, wouldn't it? No, maybe the next week, right?
Yeah, cause the first plan's on.
Yep.
How soon do they set up, do they set up, I mean, wouldn't that be a problem with them setting up for the election the next day?
No.
Or how soon do they do that?
They don't come here until the next day to set up, it starts at eight, so they don't-
Okay, is, uh, the first Monday work for you? That would be?
Make the motion to approve the, the November meeting of November seventh, due to the general election on November eighth.
Second, I just can say for discussion, um, does the zoning board, doesn't always meet correct on the first one?
Doesn't always meet, no.
But the library meets at five fifteen, and they use the outer by six or six fifty. All right, uh, voting in, uh, Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Number fourteen, discussion action budget workshop fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, which we've decided next Tuesday at seven thirty P M, is that correct?
Yes, correct, so this is just a little heads up, so if anybody has any questions or comments for next week, um, nothing fancy. This is just a couple pages out of the state budget that we have to submit in, it's just gonna explain that what we're gonna take in and what our expenditures are.
Will. I may not attend.
What's that?
I may not attend.
That's all right, we'll be off with a couple, you guys pass around to you. Everybody, you want to?
Yes, sir.
All right, passing down.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Courtney, can I give you one? I just gave all mine away. I just gave all mine away. Courtney, I'll give you yours back, don't worry, you, you're so good, you already know what's mine. I don't need this too, you don't get it, I cheated. So we'll start off with the first page, and I'll go over all this, obviously, next week too, but this is, I'll just, uh, state the main points over here. So obviously, our taxes will bring in a total of four hundred thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four and five cents. Um, the county does get one percent of that, so we're at three ninety-six, nine oh five. Uh, so that's our total intake, and if you look at the front page, this includes the manor and everyone, you see our past year's actuals and estimates, so those numbers, it shows that we have, uh, cash reserve of four point five million. We don't actually have that, the manor has over half of their, uh, cash for, for us. So we can flip to the next page, and this is really where our adopted budget and- So we can flip to the next page, and this is really where our adopted budget numbers will come through, and like I said, I'll explain them all next week. This will give us a heads up. So I'm not gonna talk about the operating expenses, 'cause that covers salaries, um, fuel, insurance, normal operating expense that we're gonna have to incur. So we have capital improvements, other capital outlay, debt service, and our transfers. So if you go to the last page, so it really, I really kinda spread it out there for what those numbers truly mean. So city hall, capital improvements, we're doing flooring and H V A C, and we've budgeted. We budgeted thirty thousand for that. Uh, we talked about the ready. Um, the four thousand for other capital outlay, that's more for any of our leftover equipment, if we have a copier go down, computers, uh, anything technical like that. And then the transfer out is actually our general obligation bonds, that's seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five. Uh, the two bonds that we have for our general obligation bonds are our library and our streets. Um, we had a lot fall off this year, so our taxes are actually, we're gonna levy less this year than we did last year, so our taxes for levy basis actually went down. Uh, we had some bonds fall off, so that's really helped us out. Uh, moving on for the police, the other capital outlays, equipment, we set that aside for any equipment, we'll need anything for Andrew, if we have to buy any extra gear, vests, guns. Um, all that's set aside there for him. Uh, we put out, uh, five thousand, that left, we already purchased a gun for him, so that's already paid for. Um, so we're hoping that'll cover his equipment that he needs to fit him. Uh, we've moved down to the streets, uh, obviously, you see five hundred thousand dollars with capital improvements, uh, that's an estimate. That is for Euclid, Pilcher, and Sixth Street. Uh, last year, when the bids came in, it was four eighty-five, uh, we rejected it, but we wanna make sure we cover our basis on those, so we kept that at five hundred thousand. That'll obviously be a bond that we put through, but we have to show that we will, we will take it and extend it. And it might not even be on this fiscal year. If the bids come in, which come in, uh, the twenty-second of September, it might be where the contractors are not gonna finish till the, till after October one, so they might even roll over to our next year. Um, the other capital outlay for the streets is at thirteen thousand, that is for, uh, snowblower for this case year, we haven't really looked for one yet, but, uh, what I've looked through, it's been around there. I've asked some people to tell me some numbers, and they haven't gotten back to me yet. Uh, uh, debt service, I didn't write it down here for the streets, but debt service, that's just an old street pavement, that's Ninth Street, we're still paying the debt on, we refinanced that loan, I believe last year, is that balloon payment we're working on. And some, and some other, uh, structure we're paying off our streets. The manor, so you see the, and this is where it says, it says public health and social services, that's really an umbrella term. Um, that's gonna fall into our sales tax for, uh, social services, so that eighty-four thousand is actually manor funds for sales tax. Uh, we put it down for capital, uh, payments, could be fireworks, the fire hood, uh, we have not received any, any receipts yet, so we haven't paid it out yet, so most likely it'll be on our next fiscal year payout. And then they do have some future projects that the boards are talking about, possibly carpet, possibly H V A C and some other things, so. Uh, we budgeted some extra money to form there, if we need to use it in the future. So culture and recreation, which is our next one, that is a huge broad term, that falls under our libraries, our parks, our summer rec, our pool. Um, so that encompasses all recreation and culture. Um, our biggest ones is our capital improvement for a hundred thousand dollars, that's obviously are gonna be mostly our pool. Um, and we have, our park sidewalks need some attention and some other layout, so we put twenty-five thousand in the parks, which, like I said, a lot of us broke down when we do budget, but. Twenty-five thousand for the parks, and then seventy-five thousand mostly come out of the pool. Um, we just got a rough quote so far, the pool needs all-new crack filling and everything, it's gonna be about forty thousand dollars. And then we still have to get a quote back from the filters, the motors, and everything else we need, so we're projecting to spend about a hundred thousand in that category. Um, the other outlay is a fifteen thousand, that's, that comes from summer rec, which is actually our baseball and soccer fields. Um, we need to update some bathrooms there, uh, we need to redo some concrete, they've gotten donations for a cover for the Legion grandstands, and they've asked us if we could help with the concrete, and. I think it's a good deal for us to do so. It's about twenty thousand dollars for the cover, and we'll just be helping out with, uh, about five thousand dollars worth of concrete or less. And then the other five grand, we'll, we'll need it, and we'll re-updo the lights for the west, um, small north ball field. Uh, we received the lights from the school, and obviously, we'll need some new wiring conduit. Um, we're gonna work together, hopefully with, uh, Blake, uh, and Norse, or Nycom and help out with trenching and everything, so hopefully we'll get that done pretty cheap. Um, debt service, you see that forty-eight thousand, three thirty, that is actually the last, I believe it's the last, that is the last playground equipment payment that we have for Children's Park. So although we did get a little grant for thirty thousand when we first came in, the majority of it had to be, um, we gotta get a loan for it, so we're almost done paying for that. I'm pretty sure it's the last payment this year, so that'll be nice to eat off our books. Community development, um, we don't have anything in there, but that's operating expense, that just looks huge at one point five million. That is, um, that'll be any grants, loans, D T R, so that might not all come in for operating expense, but we have that coming in and going out as a pass through. So that, that involves, um, L B eight forty, R B G, R I R P, and even keynote, so that's where that lies. Um, the electric utility capital improvements, so we just, I just put this in here just in case we need to redo anything in the electrical plant, when our generator leaves and everything, for capital outlay for any equipment. Uh, if we have to worry about heating or cooling, or any updates to the outside of the building. I would like to see us finish our lights on the outside of the power plant and do some painting, 'cause it looks kinda rough, so. Um, through D T R, we weren't allowed, the city wasn't allowed to utilize our funds, and everybody's fixing up their business, and here our power plant's looking, looking a little rough. We don't have to spend that money, um, but I just put it there to, to even out, so that's, that's a choice we can make down the road. Uh, the transfer out, that obviously is transfer out electric, which we usually do to provide funds for our general fund. So although our general fund did go up on valuation, twenty-six point some percent, we are still not able to cover through taxes, um, all of our needs. Solid waste, which is the transfer, and the C and D, that debt service is payments on equipment that we purchased last year, and that transfer out is also the general fund. Waste water, which is our sewer, so fifteen thousand in other capital, that is really set aside for when things break down, we have motors and everything that run our, our lift stations and everything. Um, and most of us just take maintenance and upkeep, we usually utilize most of that money, our capital even more, when we have pumps go out. Uh, debt service is an S R F loan for the lagoons, we're still paying on that, obviously, we will be for a long time, we just, we just, uh, redid the rate last year through the state. Um, the water department, so the three hundred thousand capital improvements, that's obviously our Y Z F L down here on Fourth Street. Uh, we all, we hope that that solves our problems, we really won't know. Uh, October sixth should be where the bids come in on those from Miller and Associates, so we'll find out what companies are gonna start coming in and finding out if we get lucky and it works. Um, if it does, we'll grab two hundred thousand dollars out of our, out of our ARQ money to do that, and then we'll only have a hundred thousand dollars left to come up with to finish that out. This project might roll over the next fiscal year, but we made sure that we had it all in here for, if, if everything goes well on time schedules. Um, so other capital outlay, that's more of the equipment, that is erts, that can be for valves and, and everything else like that. We've been spending a lot of money on, on valves and redoing it, when we break up the streets, we have valves that don't operate, and so we just need to keep up on upkeep. We've found it where, we've tried shutting off maids, and they just don't operate, obviously, you go around and, we exercise them every year, but exercising a valve once a year, and we have how many hundreds of valves around, they just sometimes just go bad. And then the, and the last ninety thousand is transferring to general fund again to support it, so we're transferring about a hundred and ninety-nine thousand to our general fund. Last year, we transferred three hundred and sixty-six, so we are improving. Um, one of the biggest things is we, we, we took the auditor's, um, idea about the stair stepping and how much we needed to do. Uh, Courtney and I, we don't get paid out of the general no more, we switched to power plant this year. Uh, we're trying to meet, we're trying to meet our goals that the auditor wants us to meet, so we're trying to move forward and, and work it so it looks better for some paper. Uh, so if all goes according to plan, which most likely it won't, we probably won't get all the grants in and out and everything. But our, our total budget, and this includes the nursing home, is, uh, just shy of eight point two million for dis, for some transfers. So all in all, it's actually down from last year, our budget is, it's down, I believe, uh, I didn't bring that sheet paper, but I believe it's like six percent lower. Uh, last year, we levied sixty-six cents to kind of the school, but we, we'd be down to the sixty-one cents when we get done, so we're, we will be, um, lowering the levy. So we're pretty happy, we, we don't have any major, major, uh, capital expenditures, except for the streets, which we knew were coming. Other than that, we're quitting, we're gonna hold off another year on anything else we need, and we think we're, we're pretty conservative. Is there any questions from anyone? I know that was kinda fast, I'll redo it all Tuesday, and I ruined Brian's seat, it'll be in a half hour, but. Uh, Tuesday will be a lot longer, I will get into depth on exactly every account and what things are worth, and, and, but if anybody has any questions. They can talk to me now, they can talk to me from now to next Tuesday, during Tuesday, but I mean, if you have any question, give me a heads up, we can talk about anything we want, so.
That's seven P M. next week?
Seven thirty. Seven thirty, yes. Yep, as long as Brooke posts it in the paper tonight, it will be.
I'll make sure he does.
Yeah. So, um, does anybody have any questions, anything they think we need to change, want to change, wanna see? Think we're out of whack?
Well.
Thank you.
Number fifteen, council comments, Pam?
Yeah.
Tyler?
No.
Brian?
Good.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I have two things, it won't take that long, I promise you. Um, I've, I've meant to mention this in my lowest spiel, I have had some break-ins in vehicles again, drive mostly on the northwest side. Um, the last break-in was Sunday morning between the hours of one and seven. Um, it was pretty specific, it was actually windows getting broken out with the window punch. Um, I will tell you that I'm working with Norfolk P D, they've got a couple of people that are actually from Norfolk. It's not anybody from Plainview that's been breaking into cars, however, they do have associates here, so I think they're working together, so please keep your cars locked. Take your valuables out, spread the word, don't leave guns, don't leave wallets, don't leave purses, change anything with value, take them out of your vehicle, okay? Because nine times out of ten, I'm not gonna catch them, and I'm not saying that because I suck, I'm just saying that because it's hard to catch, it's hard to catch them, you know what I mean? So please be aware of that. And then the second thing I wanted to say is that dispatch is working fabulously, so thanks for that. I mean, it has, they don't, they, they are now realizing just how busy Plainview is. They're like, holy cow, I'm like, yeah, so you're welcome and thank you.
Yep.
You talking about break-in, how come nothing's ever put in the paper, so people are maybe look at it a little more under break-ins, you know, like. Maybe people will, they will, they will put it in the paper, not just take it down.
You know, that's a very good question.
You know what I mean?
I do, um, social media, though, and I'll be very honest.
Cause not everybody does social media.
So, can I answer?
Yeah.
Okay, so even though it's gonna go in a newspaper, um, it could hinder an investigation. I mean, and on social media, I think that's, it can be a good avenue, but also, now I've got these people that I've got an eye on, I've got a beat on, I've got a lead on. And now this stuff is getting put on social media, and they're running high, and now I got nothing. I'm back to square one after a couple months. So I do think, like, the crime stoppers in the newspaper might be alright, hey, if, if anything, hey, people lock your cars. But I think it's been happening over the course of two years, that people know that it's happening. So, good question, I don't mean to shoot you down like that, and, and I didn't mean anything by that, so please don't take offense, it's just, sometimes it can hinder an investigation. Um, I, and I, I can work with Brooke on that, as far as like, you know, um, throw something in the paper, say, hey, people lock your cars, but we should know that, I mean, unfortunately, we have, we've come to that. Um, more cameras are getting put up, just because it's on camera, though, I've got video of two people walking by a, an individual's house. However, I can see them walking, but I got nothing other than two people walking, I don't have facial features, I've got nothing, so there's that. Um, but that's a good question, and I might talk to Brooke about that, if, if nothing else, just, hey, people lock your cars, it's happening again.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, aye? Both in the same side, we're adjourned. See you next Tuesday at seven thirty.